I'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mrs. Clancy?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mrs. Truppo?
Here.
Mr. Basic?
Here.
Mr. DeCuliac?
Here. No minutes, correct. Any old business? On to new business. PC 2025-019 1590 Norton Road Site Plan.
Thank you. This application is for a site plan approval and conditional use. This is specifically for a Taco Bell. Looking at the site, this property is right at the north end of the city at Darrow and Norton Road. Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay.
Nothing against Taco Bell. I go to Taco Bell. But it just, it makes no sense to me. I thought we were trying to upgrade and make this area nicer and put an amphitheater in that would enable us to do that. And I don't think that's doing it. I'm not sure that we have any way to deny it, but it certainly doesn't make sense to me that the city's behind it.
Yeah. And if I could add, this development is not part of our agreement with the current property owner. We're still working on a development agreement where they are committing to bring in a certain amount of restaurants, sit-down restaurants, in the plaza area. So we're still bringing those forward. And I believe they've also been working with Taco Bell for quite a long time. So, you know, this isn't affecting the rest of the development.
Okay. I just think it's defeating the whole purpose. Any other comments? Anyone from the audience? You've got to come up here. And you're going to have to turn the mic on. Just push the button. And then state your name and address.
Okay. My name is Jerry Jeffrey, and I live at 2003 Sandy Hook here in Stowe.
And you swear that what you're about to say will be the truth?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. My question is, I agree with these gentlemen up here because when we were first told about the amphitheater project, we were told and sold on the fact that this was going to bring in nice restaurants. I love Taco Bell, too, and it would be nice to have one in the area, but is that the right place for it? So I think our concerns, I think you'll have that concern with many residents, we do want to increase, you know, and make it a nicer downtime kind of area. So I think that's, I just wanted to voice that opinion because that's what we were told in the beginning, not that it was going to be a bunch of fast food restaurants.
To go ahead and answer that, again, I know this is kind of hard to separate, but we are still along that path to go ahead and do that with that plaza. In fact, the plaza owners are here tonight. We have been working, this has, it does, but it doesn't. It has a connection, but it doesn't. We're not controlling that piece of property. What our thing that we have set in motion is an amphitheater to bring in small restaurants in a plaza improvements. So again, it's one of those type of things, I believe, the Socklofs have been working with, I believe Taco Bell for probably almost a year, back and forth. And again, that was before or right at about the same time that we said that we wanted to go ahead and do this.
Okay.
So again, I want to give assurance, this has no count reference or whatever to this. Our main focus is that plaza, bringing people in and going for it. I understand your concerns, but also too, on the same token, I want you to understand we're not backing away from our vision.
Okay.
Okay? So our vision is still there.
Good.
That lot just happens to be there, too.
Okay.
So that's kind of the way it's worked.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to make one more comment. Can you please put up the site overview of the whole area, not just of the, right there? Okay. So where it says Norton Road, that's going to end up being one of the main entrances into this area off of Norton Road? And whether we want to talk about it being part of the development or not, we're putting a convenient, high-traffic restaurant on the main entrance of coming into this plaza. So yes, I think we're still moving forward with the plaza development and the amphitheater and all the things we've talked about. This is going to be the half of the main entrance feeding off of Norton Road into this. And it's not consistent with building a, I drove through the Oakwood Plaza over the weekend to refresh my mind on what that looks like. And one of the things I noticed is that the amphitheater is tucked in behind restaurants, right? It's kind of, it's kind of not disconnected, but it's tucked away a little bit. And the residents have still been clear about, constantly, we know what type of restaurants and businesses we want to see here. And I'm a business person, and I'm like, go out and build your own business efforts, or you'd like to see something different. And I understand that. But at the same time, we're in a position where we can, should be thinking about what this looks like holistically, and this is part of that holistically look, unfortunately mine. Unless we're going to build a 20-foot wall tower that's going to be painted with scenery that you can't see the Taco Bell restaurant or the other ones, that's fine, too. But that will look just as odd as having the restaurant there, in my opinion. Thanks.
Turn it on.
Good afternoon, everyone.
State your name and address.
Alex Spoh, 101 Camelot Drive, Fond du Lac, Wisconsin. I am here on behalf of the, everything I say.
You swear that what you're about to say will be the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of the engineering firm. We also have the development team here with us and the owner here tonight. I know they're very much looking forward to get into here. I know there's concerns about the use, but kind of looking at the overall development, we do see here, shown on the overall site plan, we have multiple drive-through facilities immediately to the west of us, and we do have that buffer area of that private drive between the two facilities. I know that there's been a lot of in-depth use to determine on where they would like to go for market variability and market viability, and this is one of their prime locations that they were looking at. And it does just meet that use immediately west. We, once we got a little bit further in the design phase, we became aware of the amphitheater project to the east. So something that we've done to try and accommodate for that is to help increase pedestrian friendliness and kind of site flowage between the two sites while trying to kind of create that transition area, I understand is a challenge, but you do have the drive between you. And the goal is to try and marry the two uses best together with increased pedestrian access and while matching the existing uses to the west.
All right. Any other questions?
A motion for approval of PC 2025-019.
It's been, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve PC 2025-019. Are there any comments, Jamie, that came in?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clancy?
No.
Mr. Wagner?
No.
Mrs. Truppo?
No.
Mr. Basic?
No.
Mr. DeCuliac?
No.
Motion fails. Moving on to PC 2025-020 4316 Hudson Drive, signed variance.
Thank you. And just a quick reminder, this is a recommendation, so this will go to council on August 7th. Mostly intended for signs along the right-of-way. So sign number one, this is 16.6 square feet. The only issue with this is that it does not comply with our monument-style sign requirement. Monument signs are required to be, that be 50% of the bottom of the sign has to be in contact with the ground or supporting structure. As you can see on this one, the sign is suspended above the structure itself. So it's just a variance to not be a monument-style sign. And sign number two is the same size, again, the same issue, is projected or suspended over above the ground, so they need a variance. This one's from a setback and to not comply with the monument sign style requirement. Happy to take any questions.
Any comments from the audience? Is there a motion? Well, you have. Go ahead. Oh, I don't know.
Good evening. Ben Weinerman, 2211 Medina Road, Suite 100.
You swear what you're about to say is the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, the variances we're applying for, two very simple variances, the main being that these signs are not traditional and the fact that the bases are not attached to the foundation. We've built this sign in over half a dozen communities in the past five years, had very good success with them. I think the purpose, or at least my interpretation of the purpose of that code section is to dissuade people from putting in cheaper-looking steak-style political signs for the long term. I think our signs are very thoughtfully designed, they're harmonious with the neighboring assisted living, we have a very good working relationship with them. But the setback variance to the neighbor's property line is just to differentiate us from the assisted living itself, so we want to provide some directional signage as to where you're going.
Okay.
I understand you've done this in the past, but this does not meet our current zoning code? Is there a reason why you can't meet?
We could, you know, redesign, this is kind of our branding package. You know, looking at it from a pragmatic approach, I, you know, I think this meets the intent of a monument sign, although it's, you know, would be considered a freestanding sign. I think it's almost semantics when you're looking at what we're presenting.
So the neighboring facility, isn't that the same ownership?
No.
Different ownership? Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion? Well, I'll move that we approve PC 2025-020. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve PC 2025-020. Is there any comments from the public?
No.
Roll call.
Mrs. Clancy?
No.
Mr. Wagner?
No.
Mrs. Truppo?
I got it this time.
No. Mrs., or Mr. Basic?
No.
Mr. DeCuliac?
No.
The motion fails. Moving on to number three, PC 2025-021 4386 Maple Park Road, minor subdivision and variance.
Thank you. So this property is being proposed to split up into four separate parcels. If you're aware of this property, this is where the previous pool was, the community pool. This is an old image, you can probably see on this one, the pool's since been removed. So this is a general layout of where the new properties would be located. Lot one, start at the west end, and then lot two, three, and four. I'll say, looking at this, these lots and sizes are consistent with the other lots in the area at approximately half an acre. So the property is Zoned R3, which requires 12,000 square feet of lot area, 35 feet in lot width at the right-of-way, and then a maximum lot depth of three and a half times the lot width. This is one of those requirements that we are removing from the code since we get so many variances from it, but you know, six months or so away. So lot one, they just require, excuse me, they just require a variance from the lot width requirement, sorry, the lot depth. This one's at 6.9 times the lot width. So again, lot one, it's that western piece, it has that narrow frontage, and then going back. Then lot two, they require the same variance for the lot depth, this one's just at 3.6 times. The reason being, just the angle of the property just slightly increasing behind, you know, at the rear of it. And then lot three and four, they comply with all the requirements for lot area, lot width, and lot depth. So I'll leave this up for review. This is the proposed survey, and happy to take any questions.
How would these lot configurations fit with the proposed variance changes or zoning changes?
They would still comply. We're proposing a decrease in the R3 size. I think lot width will be about the same, then we would remove the lot depth, so they would comply with all of the requirements.
Anyone from the audience? State your name and address, please.
I am Mary Appleby. I live at 4377 Maple Park Road, which is right across from the pool, actually, where the strange little lot one is.
And you swear that what you're about to say is the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Yes. Just a couple of questions. They were working today to fill the pool area still. They didn't start filling, really filling the pool with the dirt till last Thursday, and they were working hard to do it today, too. My question is, when can they start building on that? Because it's going to sink. It will sink. It just, that's, that land and where you can see where it says like lot three, lot four, that part where the grassy area was, always was wet. So I have a question about, you know, their drainage. Are they thinking about, about, excuse me, how they're going to drain things, making sure that that is adequate? Because you're taking away all that slag area that was absorbing a lot of stuff. I don't know if you know any more of their plans, or do you know if they're going to be rental houses or regular houses, or what? Have they talked anything about that? We've, in the neighborhood, have not heard anything?
I was just going to say, the property owners are here. I would address those questions to them.
Okay. And it has been wet. There is times when it has been very wet over there, and that does affect our drainage for our side of the street, too, because you can already see that it's higher now than it was on that side, so it will be probably coming there. And are they going to be selling the lots first, or are they going to build the houses and then sell the lots and the houses together? Those were some of the questions. Besides, the fact is, there is no parking on that side of the street, both sides of the street. We have no parking because of the curve. And then you add four more houses and lots of more people, so, plus the rentals down below. There is times when the bus sometimes has trouble getting through because of the, you know, the rentals below us. So those were my questions.
All right.
Hi. I'm Sharon Martino. I live at 4368 Maple Park Road. I am immediately adjacent to lot one.
You swear that what you're about to say will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I live immediately adjacent to what is shown on the images, like lot one. My question for the planning committee is, has the county, Summit County, given the variance? Because there's a main sewer drain storm back there that last year, it's at the, my northwest corner and the southwest corner of lot one there in the drawing. I mean, I had a 16-foot sinkhole that the city of Stowe, maintenance had to come in and they'll do to wash out back there. So I want to know what the plan for, not only drainage for the plot, you know, the land, but then the sewers and then adding, and yes, I am assuming these are going to be multifamily homes being built for sale or rent. So that is more water sewer and everything hitting that storm drain. They've not, since I've been aware, not come out and done any improvements to that storm drain. I don't know why. I had a 16-foot sinkhole in my yard, but I'd like to know why, and I'd like to know that it won't happen again when this all happens. So I actually am here to ask, as an adjacent property owner, what rights I have as, with the city of Stowe to request, like, the land along my property being resurveyed and being addressed for the drainage problems I'm having, I'm currently having.
Thank you.
I'd also, oh, sorry, I have one more thing.
Okay.
I agree with the traffic. Maple Park is a Speedway. I believe the city and the police department know that it's been used for years as a thoroughfare and a cut-through to miss traffic on Fish Creek from Stowe Road to Graham, traffic from Fish Creek to 91, and then 91 to Stowe Road and through there with the construction on 91. I mean, it's terrible. I, yesterday, was taking my trash can down, and I had to step into the street to slow a speeding car through there. They fly through there, and I want to know if there's four additional multifamily units put in there with all these driveways coming out. I mean, how am I going to get out of my driveway? How is the safety of the rest of the residents on that street going to be taken into consideration?
I'm Michelle D'Antonio, 4317
I'm Michelle D'Antonio, 4317 North Gilwood, Stowe, Ohio.
You swear above state, thank you.
So I'm on the road behind the pool.
Yep.
And so we have a slope and it goes downhill. So if you're gonna bring the variance back farther, it's gonna come back farther and stop roads downhill. Including my neighbor, they would be here tonight, but they're having a baby tonight. They're my next-door neighbors, and they're part of that, and we're right there on the corner there. We'll also be affected by that. So we're concerned about the drainage, sewage, everything else with that additional variance that's gonna change things for us as well. So we're more concerned about the issues. Thank you.
Thank you. The owners are here?
Hi there, my name is Matthew Neff. 6830 Chaffee Court, Brexwell, Ohio.
Do you swear that what you're about to say will be the truth?
I do.
Go ahead.
There have been a lot of questions asked, so I'll just see if I remember them all. But first of all, these will be for sale homes. They're not gonna, there are no rentals. The drainage, I mean, we'll have to do site plans for each lot before we build the house. So that site plan will be approved by the engineer, and it'll address drainage, so that we don't have any adverse drainage conditions. The pool was filled and compacted in six inch lifts, and it's been done very, very well. So that should be, if there is any sink, you know, depression, it should only be a couple inches maybe. But we can address that when we're, if necessary, when we're building the homes. Okay, was it basically drainage and rentals and compaction? Any other questions you want me to address?
So you said your intent was to build for-sale homes?
Yes, for-sale homes.
Maybe not rentals, at least in your position?
No, no, not rentals, for sale.
And so then, what kind of a setback do you see off of the main road, because?
Well, the minimum is 35 feet, but the lot one is gonna be farther back. So we can get the 80-foot width at the building line.
Yeah, these are nice deep lots, it'd be nice to have some setback off the street with them, so.
Well, we can look into that, too.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, the ones next to lot four, I'm not sure what that setback is on that house, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't come in front of it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
If I can make one comment, just a reminder, this is, no development is proposed at this time, this is just for the minor subdivision variance.
Yep.
We're not talking about building right now. So we're just talking about...
So that doesn't happen, so...
We'd have, yes. Exactly.
I would speak on the record also.
Pardon?
I would speak on the microphone if she's gonna...
My name, Sharon Martino.
No, you don't, just continue.
Are they single or multifamily homes being built? Thank you.
It has been deter, it has not been determined exactly what we're going to build yet. We don't have the architectural plans completed. We're still in the planning stage, and it could be either a one-family or a two-family home per zoning.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie, are there any comments from email?
No.
Very good. May I have a motion?
So if you are making multifamily homes, you could have up to eight different sections over there on that part. Is that what you're talking about?
What do you mean by eight different sections?
If you said multifamily homes, if you're having on each lot at least two homes, then you could have eight homes on that section.
If you had duplex, yes.
If it's considered a duplex.
You could have four buildings split into duplex would be eight residents.
Or more, because it's a multifamily, or duplex is all they can have?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If I can make one more comment, single-family homes are permitted by right if they propose duplexes. Those are conditional uses, which will need plan, commission, and council approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve PC 2025-021 for the minor subdivision and variance separation for 4386 Maple Park Road.
I second it. It's been moved and seconded to approve, is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Chopto?
Yes.
Mr. Basic?
Yes.
Mr. DeCuliac?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to PC 2025-022, 1680 Norton Road, site plan, conditional use, and variance.
Thank you. This project is for the amphitheater that we've been working on for almost a year now. This is the location of the property outlined in red. As I noted before, there's tried-through restaurants. This is part of a public-private development with the current property owners to redevelop this area and the plaza buildings and the parking area. So it's been a long time coming, but we're excited to get this started. Just one thing I wanna note on this overall plan, there is a bike and hike trail just south of the plaza that we will... We have plans to put in a spur to connect off that bike and hike trail, right in between the buildings or somewhere behind the buildings. Still working on those, we'll have to get approval through Metro Parks. But I just wanna let, I wanna know that's part of the plan, I'm gonna be focusing on the property for the amphitheater. So I don't have any designs for the spur to show you at this time. Yeah. We've already, we've already spoken with Metro Parks about this spur, they're in full support of it. They just have to get approval through their board, so. Okay, so this is the site plan. So the amphitheater itself will be branded as the AMP. We've been working for a while now with a marketing team and coming up with slogans and branding for the amphitheater property and just to make sure it's all cohesive and that it sounds right when you say it to people. So we settled on the AMP for this project. The amphitheater itself will be about 3,700 square feet in area. That will include about 600 square foot green room and 370 square feet for storage and mechanical. The stage itself will be about 2,700 square feet. And there will be two accessory buildings, there'll be a 835 square foot restroom facility at the rear of the property, and then 287 square foot concession stand. This is intended to hold approximately 2,500 people. This would just be, you know, that'd be during the major events that we would hold. And a couple of other things to point out, the only access for vehicles to this property is on Norton Road, a 20-foot access. Just a couple parking spaces to allow vehicles to pull up to the amphitheater itself to load and unload. We plan to hold 10 ticketed events per year, so that'd be mostly for musical acts. There'll also be markets, open-air festivals throughout the year. Our parks and rec department would move some of their programs, like concerts on the green, yoga in the mornings, we move up to this area. We set up so we can have outdoor movie nights, we can stream live sports, so we can watch Ohio State beat Michigan every year. Was that funny, is that funny? Yeah. But the site does require a couple of variances for setbacks. For the amphitheater itself, does require a side yard setback. The code requires a 30-foot building setback for this specific conditional use. Otherwise, typically under a C4 district, it'd be a 20-foot side and rear yard setback. But for the conditional use of parks and outdoor public recreation, requires a 30-foot setback. The amphitheater will be 11.4 feet from the side east property line. The reason for that being is that there is a 30-foot sanitary easement running right through the middle of the property. So that forces the amphitheater to go near that property line. And the intent of having the amphitheater in this corner of the property is that so we can angle it towards the plaza building, so that when that building gets renovated, we get nice sit-down restaurants there, people can enjoy their meal, sit outside and watch the show. And then the concessions and the restroom facilities require setbacks from the rear, require variances from the rear setbacks. The restroom will be 20 feet, and concessions will be 23 feet from the rear property line. Again, this were just a normal, under a normal C4 zoning, it'd be a 20-foot building setback, but in this case, it's 30 feet. So each structure does require a variance. Then to talk about the parking for a minute. So we don't have a, we don't have an applicable use for this type of thing in the city, at least in our parking code. So in this situation, plan and commission shall apply the standard for a specified use, which the commission determines to be most similar to the proposed use. So these are the four most similar uses that I could find in our code for parking ratios. It'd be up to you to decide which one to apply it to, they're all kind of the same. What they all have in common is that it's basically one parking space per three seats, whether it's three seats or three seats of seating capacity. These are all typically intended for indoor uses, where there's stadium seating or something like that. But there's no fixed seating with this use, it's just a lawn area. So surprisingly, our code does provide some clarification on this. When fixed seats are not indicated, the capacity is determined as one seat per 20 square feet of assembly room. So if we were to, say, pick outdoor commercial recreation to apply this to, the lawn area directly in front of the amphitheater is about 22,000 square feet. So if we're to use that area, that'd be, require 367 parking spaces. Our code allows shared parking, up to 50%, of the required parking can be shared on other lots, which we are working on a development agreement to use the parking area of the plaza for our events. So there's a couple ways to do it. There can be a variance to allow to 100% of required parking spaces to be shared, or a variance to not meet the minimum required amount of parking. I mean, this site only has two parking spaces behind the amphitheater. So it can be a variance to either allow 100% shared parking or to allow two parking spaces and not meet the 367. This plaza can hold approximately 650 vehicles on the property. And for reference, this is Oakwood Square down in Plain Township. They developed their amphitheater, I think they built it two years ago. Same situation, this is where we borrowed the idea from, we're actually even using the same architect for this project. This amphitheater was built to help, to hold 2,200 people at capacity, and this parking lot has approximately 490 spaces. So they can accommodate that, if it gets tight, they have some overflow parking areas, which we would as well. We're in discussions of using the senior center down the street, which is only a half-mile away, to shuttle people back and forth if needed. And that would really probably just be needed during those 10 ticketed events throughout the year. And the architect is here, they could answer more questions about the parking and how that works between this and Oakwood Square. So before moving on, just wanna get initial feedback on the parking and which use to apply this to. If plan and commission has any feedback.
Looks fine to me.
Okay.
You also have, although we're not, we're not going to be able to utilize the spaces, but you have the Giant Eagle parking lot, which is pretty substantial, right? Which is not part of this development, I understand that.
Right.
But there are people who are gonna park where there's a spot open. So just wanna be sure that we're mindful of that, right? To not pinch the other business people that are already there and, and make it so they don't have spaces for their customers coming and going.
Yeah, Giant Eagle's made us very aware of that. There is a reciprocal easement agreement on this property between, between this property and Giant Eagle and the assisted living facility at the southeast corner there. That agreement works out with, you know, all the parking and how that works throughout the site. So intent is absolutely not to direct any vehicles to Giant Eagle or anything like that. Be all to this plaza and the overflow parking if we need to use it. Is plan and commission okay with applying the outdoor commercial recreation parking ratio?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, landscaping, so it'll be, it'll be well landscaped, there'll be 58 new shade trees and over 800 shrubs. It's been reviewed and approved by the city arborist. There's a very detailed landscaping plan, the architect will probably elaborate on this more. But there will be sufficient screening between Norton Road and the west property line. And then a few other features that we're looking to install. So in the future, we can do covered swings, which would be on the east side. Gathering space area, which is the circle area, this would be landscaped. And this would be more suited for, if we have small acoustic acts, or we can have, Mayor has mentioned jungle terrae out there, you know, for kid shows or library events. That would be the most appropriate space to have that, those types of events. And then we'd also have six gas fire pits at the outside of the lawn area that could be rentable by the public, kind of first come, first served. And I have some renderings of what this might look like. The top left is a rendering of the back of the amphitheater, so this is what you would see from Norton Road. And then bottom left, looking up from the left side of the property. In this rendering, you can see the concession building is restroom, the abundance of landscaping swings out on the side, and that gathering space I talked about for only smaller events. Again, this is a conditional use for outdoor public recreation. These are the supplemental regulations. Loudspeaker systems have to be approved by, or shall be approved by plan and commission and council. And shall not create nuisance, lighting shall not shine onto adjacent property. Third one doesn't apply, you know, if there's athletic fields, cannot be required in any yard. And then plan, commission, and council may require any outdoor activity to be fenced to minimize traffic hazards. I'll say, the loudspeaker systems, we are working closely with the architect, again, who did the Oakwood Square Plaza, so they know what works and what doesn't work. And we're also working with Audio Technica to get their expertise on what's most appropriate for that area to not create any nuisance for the adjacent properties. And again, all the speakers would be facing south towards the plaza building, so directed away from residential uses. So again, site plan approval, conditional use, and the variances. Again, we have the building setback variances, and then it'd be up to plan and commission to decide which variance you wanna do for the parking, whether it's a variance from the amount of shared parking allowed or from the minimum number of required spaces. Either one works. I would just recommend, as you make that in your motion, to include that variance. The architect is here, property owners are here, if you have any questions. Mayor, would you like to?
I don't think so.
Yep, we're good, thank you.
Okay. Property owners?
Property owners. It's up to you if you want to. And, and your architects are here too? Hi. State your name and address.
Yes, Justin Gantz, 6677 Frank Avenue Northwest, North Canton, Ohio.
And you swear what you're about to say is the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, we're, we're here to answer any questions you guys might have. I think Zach did a nice job of presenting the, the intent here and, and request for variance. Again, a lot of this is modeled after what we have known to succeed in Oakwood Plaza, so we feel quite confident in what we're proposing here.
And the restrooms, are they the exact same size as the ones in North Canton?
They're actually, I believe we added one more stall to each men's and women's side, and the-
To me, that was just very undersized.
Sure.
If we're ever having 2,500 people there, and even if you added one more, that's not enough.
Of course. Absolutely. The intent is anything above a few hundred people that the city would have to supplement with. I believe Nick Ren said they've used the portable, not Porta-Jons, but they're like the nicer air-conditioned trailers that they bring in. But we, we've had to go through this in other jurisdictions, just the cost to build a restroom facility to house that many people, it just, you're getting in over a million dollars just on a bathroom.
So to add one more stall in each bathroom is going to cost upwards of that?
No, no. I would not say that, but I'm saying to add the, the total quantity you needed for that. If you're going to go by, yeah, I mean, we, we had talked with the building department and everything with this, and they felt comfortable with their quantity and count here, with, again, with the intent that any large event would have to be supplemented with temporary fixtures.
Okay, I just, I think we're trying to do a really nice amphitheater. And I don't think we should be to the point where we're putting a lot of supplemental trailers on there, air-conditioned or otherwise. I understand that maybe might need to do that once or twice, but if you have 600, 700 people there, those restaurants aren't sufficient.
Those restrooms will accommodate up to 800 people by code, like by the letter of the law there.
Okay.
So I, yeah. Sure, I understand.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, so the, the overall development plan was to have outdoor seating-type restaurants in, in the plaza area on the backside. So if you're having a music event, right, in the, in the amphitheater, does that sound carry across that 650 parking spots to make it audible, to where you can sit outside and enjoy the entertainment that's going on at the amphitheater at that distance? Or do you really have to be in the amphitheater to experience what the entertainment is?
Yeah, the, the intent is that you need to be within the amphitheater to, to experience, you know, every word, every note. And, and even the acoustics that we design are aimed to make sure it's staying within that and not flooding into the neighborhood and everything beyond. The, the experience of the patio diner, you will still hear ambient music, and it'll be, you know, you're, you're just not going to be intelligible to every single lyric that's being sung. I just met with the Socklofs before this, we haven't discussed this, but there are speaker solutions where you can do distributed audio throughout the plaza that can pipe in the music that's being played on stage, so that's another option. But in, in order to fully intelligibly hear everything going on on stage, it just gets to a level of, of-
Noise.
-noise that we don't, we don't want to have. So if, if it's anything like Oakwood, it's still very pleasant to have that kind of ambient music in the background. And again, there's, there are technology solutions that can solve for, you know, wanting to have that experience at a, at a restaurant.
Mr. Wagner, if I could interject, I've been down there to several concerts. If you're sitting in a restaurant, you definitely can hear the music, okay? But it's also a nice, mostly if we're looking at having some restaurants that have the garage door type things that open up, you can hear that, and it's pleasant. You can still carry a conversation if you and I were out at, at dinner. It's not overwhelming. So I can tell you, just to throw one out, I went down, there was a Frank Sinatra tribute band. You could hear the music, you could really, you knew it was a Frank Sinatra tribute band, but it wasn't overpowering. So there's many people, you know, that would walk over there, there was people that were out in the parking lot, there was people that were sitting outside. I was actually inside for several of these concerts, which was kind of my way to go. You're sitting in air conditioning and so forth and enjoying a meal, but you could hear all that, but yet it wasn't like I was sitting next to Zach screaming at him to go ahead and, and do this. So it was a pleasant atmosphere along that way. But again, I, we've had those conversations, you know, depending on what it is, you could actually supplement with speakers into that area. That way it doesn't become overpowering to the whole area. Because we have made that promise to our residents and neighbors that this is not going to be something that is going to devalue the property or make it unpleasant for them to live there. Again, we have to hold ourselves at the same standards as what we ask people to do in our community, and better. I've always said that. But again, it's one of those that if you're down there, you would see that that does work. Again, we're talking 10-ticketed events. One thing, and Zach did point out, is that we will have that smaller stage, 150, 200, if I'm correct. And that will allow us to go ahead and have these smaller things, since this is going to be parkland. And it won't also interfere, if Jungle Terry is up there, with what's going on in the restaurants also. So it's, it's kind of, Oakwood Square did not start off that way. I believe they do now have somewhat of a small stage, but this is actually, excuse me, incorporated into the plan. So that's kind of how we're handling it.
Is that area, the smaller amphitheater in lieu of like that playground that they have down there? There's no proposed-
There's a small playground at the corner here.
Oh, okay. Is that, okay. I didn't hear you mention that.
But, but not with ours.
Okay.
No playground.
This is Oakwood Square, so-
Okay, that's not ours. I didn't, okay.
No, no playground there. We, we have no interest in putting a playground there. I don't want kids around that parking lot and stuff, so.
I, I was wondering if that was the difference between the two.
Yeah, no. That was discussion right off of that, is no playground there. So we have plenty of parks and nice playgrounds, so.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question regarding the restrooms. How many accessible restrooms will, will there be?
There's, in each men's and women's, there is a full ADA accessible stall, and then there is one family restroom, which also accommodates an adult changing table as well. So that's a standalone room as well, so.
And where would these other restrooms, mobile restrooms, where would they be located on the site?
We, we've been discussing how to develop the parking to the south in a way that slows down traffic and things like that, like, you know, some type of aisle or something there. So we would incorporate the design in there, so it'd be by the entryways, you know, right, right just south of where these entries are. It, it, you know, and again, I, I totally understand the concern here. I, I just go back to my experience at Plain Township as well, and, and when you have this type of development in tandem with restaurants and a shopping center, those restrooms are naturally used as well. You know, you, you get dinner before the show, you use the restroom there, then you head over to watch the show. I've been to probably five shows at Plain Township, and I've never seen a line out the door of the restrooms there. And they do supplement with Porta-Jons there as well. But again, hearing from Nick Ren here at the city, I think you guys would do a little bit nicer job with that. So, but I get it. It's, it's an issue when it's an issue, so I, I completely understand the concern.
Yeah, it was just a concern with handicapped people. You know, how close would they be? You know, obviously, they're not going to be able to walk from the plaza over there.
Right. Yeah, I mean, especially with the family restroom here, I mean, that, that's, you know, definitely, I think taking, making sure we're handling those, those members of the audience. And, and again, just the four site of the city went ahead and has already purchased those adult changing tables. I mean, that's, that's a big deal. Like, we have, you know, somebody in our office that has, has an adult child that they bring to events and stuff like that, and it just, it makes this so much easier. So the city, I think, has already been out, out in front of those, those issues, making sure this is inclusive and, and accommodating to everyone.
To piggyback on that, yes, we purchased, but we're being fully reimbursed by it. So we're going to have one here at Skip. And since they heard of our plan to do an amphitheater, they said, do you want two? And I think it's somewhere in the area around $25,000 through Summit DD, and they're going to go ahead, we pay for it, they reimburse us for it. But we've actually even got the units already because it was a grant program to go ahead and do that. So the, the restrooms, with the help of your firm, are making sure that these fit within and make, and we're not retrofitting things, so.
My question is on the ticketed events. I went down to the, the Oakwood Square bus trip, like several of us did as well. How is that going to be controlled from a ticketing standpoint? I'm sure it's probably some sort of a wristband type thing. What might the fees be? I think if I remember correctly, at Oakwood, they found that when they were doing free concerts, obviously people will show up. Soon as they tack on a ticket, they could just say, I'll stand outside the perimeter and here, just as well, I may not be able to see the act, but I'll be able to hear them. I don't know, I, I think where you ticketed is scary to me, only because it's going to, I think it's going to limit the amount of people that will actually sit inside instead of sitting in lawn chairs outside in the parking lot listening.
A couple of things on that. First of all, with that being the case, it would be very cheap tickets. We're talking somewhere in the area, I, I can't remember what, Oakwood Square, but I think it was like-
Ten, ten dollars.
Ten, fifteen dollars a ticket. You're going to pay a little bit more if you're sitting around the fire pits, because there's eight or 10. One thing that I wanted to point out, and I think this is very important, is we are paying for this almost by cash, okay? So we're not put in the predicament of saying, we've got to make $300,000 or $500,000 a year in order to make this work, so it isn't a burden on the city. So when we're looking at ticketed events such as that, we're paying a little bit higher premium, okay? And again, we're kind of in the weeds with that, but we're paying a little bit higher premium, we're going to have to go ahead and have more police officers. So it's not to make money, it's to really cover somewhat of the event costs, and that's what we're looking at. So it isn't, we're, this whole venture is, is, I feel very comfortable with from a financial side, is whoever takes my place will not damn me in the long run in saying, why did we do this? This will be actually a facility that's paid for, and we can have it as a showpiece and a, a piece for our city, but with no cost, and we're not going back to the residents. So it really hasn't been decided about what that, that fee is. But as I've said before on many of these acts or different things like this, we are solely searching, and we, when we've talked to the developers, the Socklofs, we are searching for a family atmosphere, okay? And, and the reason why I bring that up is, yes, there will be, of course, alcohol in those restaurants and so forth. But one of the first questions that were asked to us by wholesaler was, are you in the business, are you in your vision to make money? No, I, I'm happy to break even, so we're not out there saying we've got to sell $50,000 worth of alcohol. So we don't want, we want to make this a family-friendly area. And again, as I've said many times over, you all know it, we don't have a downtown, we don't have a gathering place along that way, and number three, we don't have small restaurants. So it kind of checks all those boxes, and that's what we're angling for. We're not angling for, it's great if we break even or make a little bit of money, but it's not there to go ahead to make a lease payment or so forth like that. And we are fully invested, as I've spoke to the whole Socklaw family, of supporting, we have to do programming there, we have to do extra programming, we have to have enough programming, because we have got to support those small restaurants. That's our mission, to go and do that, because without, without this programming, why do you want to go there, and why should you put a small restaurant there? So we need to make sure that people are still feeding that, and that's why we're looking at a year-round venue. You know, Kris Kennel markets, things like that, because we've got to drive the people to this area. So that's kind of the vision, the vision hasn't changed. I know you've probably heard that, but I want to assure you the vision has not changed. And in our conversations with both the architectural firm and the developers, we've had these conversations, this is, this is what we're angling for. So, thank you.
Well, I'll add to real quick, we, you know, we did the Jackson Township Amphitheater four years ago, Oakwood Plaza Plain Township Amphitheater, two years ago. The ticketed events are the highest-attended events. I know Oakwood Plain Township, they had an Eagles tribute band last Thursday, and they sold 1,600 tickets. So, and I think they've actually increased the price of their tickets from last year because they're so heavily attended. And again, that's your prerogative, what price point you want to set it at, but I do think the quality of acts that they bring in for ticketed events draw a large audience. And I, I think it's a great question, I had the same thing when we first started these, but it, it has proven out now that the ticketed events are usually the highest-attended ones. And then just from a logistics standpoint, the way that they use it, that you get a wristband, so you walk in. Here we've got three different entry points, you would probably have a volunteer standing at each entry, they scan, you get a wristband, and at that point, it's just a nice, you know, way to just keep track of who's all in there, is that everyone has a wristband. I mean, sure, a couple of people might sneak in, you'll have a couple of people park cars in the parking lot and not, not pay to get in, but, you know, overall, I think the model works really well. And again, the other days when it's not the 10-ticketed events, it's nice to not have a fence around the whole thing and feel like it's a, you know, it, it's meant to be a park still, and that's the idea here.
If, if I could interject to Mr. Basic, I know we had a conversation seven or eight months ago about what was important behind the scenes. And the green room is larger, they're better equipped, and so forth like that. So again, if we're going to have those ticketed events, we need to make sure that the performers and so forth have the proper area in order to make this thing work. So we've really, we've emulated Jackson or Oakwood Square, but we're building on something a little bit better. But again, I would never, I am so appreciative to the trustees and so forth down at Plain Township, because they have been very forthcoming, good and bad, of what we should do or not do, plus also sharing all the stuff that they've had success with. So we've been very blessed along that way with this, with this group.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Jamie, were there any?
No.
All right. Is there a motion?
Quick reminder to include the variance language for the parking in the motion.
Okay.
I'll make an attempt to get it all down. I will make a motion to approve application PC 25-22 with the additional request for approval of a parking variance not to meet the number of required parking spaces. Is that covered all? the number of required parking spaces. Does that cover it all?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the PC 2025-022. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Chopto?
Yes.
Mr. Basic?
Yes.
Mr. DeCuliac?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, on to zoning code changes, Chapter 6.
Yeah, this is usually what people start clearing out.
Yeah, most everybody's going to leave at this point.
Where's everyone going?
I know Mr. Ren thinks we can just bring all these restrooms in. I think it's tack.
All right. I'm going to try to fly through these. So, stop me. So, stop me if you've got any questions or if there's anything that sticks out to you. As a reminder, these are resolutions, not adopting anything, just resolutions and support. So, we'll start with Chapter 6. This is general development standards. So, this includes regulations for fences, screening, vision triangles, outdoor lighting, utilities, stormwater management, which is, none of that is changing. That's all engineering requirements. So, jumping into fences and walls, we'll have a lot more requirements or at least provisions to enforce the type of fences. We'll have a good list of the type of fences that can be allowed and prohibited. So, for the most part, except for the industrial, coated chain link with slats or inserts, barbed wire, curved or spear-tipped fence, ground electric fences, deer fences, waste materials or corrugated metal fences are prohibited, except for the industrial district for some of those. Again, this just gives us more enforcement measures in case anybody puts up, you know, pallets for their fence or something like that. Garden fences. So, we have code for this now, so we've got to work with it. We propose to have a maximum four-foot height, max opacity of 20% in the front and street side yards. And to clarify, a street side yard, it'd be the side yard. You know, if you're on a corner lot, you have the front yard of the primary street. On the secondary street, you have the street side yard. So, in most cases, it'd just be lesser setback requirements on that street side. So, if it's in, within 20 feet of the right-of-way, you can go up to 18 inches in height. And then, in the interior side, in rear yards, you can have up to eight feet in height. You can have the same materials that you can have now. This has become somewhat of an issue. We get complaints about these. These are a few examples of ones around the city. The one on the top left had a violation on it. They did it without permit. They didn't meet the setback. But as long as they're, I think it's 10 feet now in the code. If they're 10 feet back, they can have that structure in the front yard. That is the front yard. This is one that we've discussed before that came up last year, the garden fence in the front yard. I'd like to get you guys' feedback on this and where you think they're most appropriate, whether you want to even allow them in the front yard. We're thinking, if they are in the front yard... Because also, what we don't want to do, we know people that want, they want gardens. Sometimes their backyards are too shaded. Maybe they have to be in the front yard, which in that case, there's variances. But in other cases, where it's a huge, like, four-acre lot, and the house is setback 100 feet, you know, it wouldn't make much sense to put it in the backyard behind the house. So, the workaround is, they just have to meet the principal building setbacks. So, if your house is 100 feet back, the garden fence could be 40 feet back from the right-of-way. You know, it'd still be in the front yard, but still be sufficiently setback from the street. Or we can just require them only in their backyard. We can allow it as it is. Want to get your feedback, and if you guys have any thoughts?
There's another one, by the way. I just noticed, I think, on 91, going north from here, on the east side. No, on 91, I thought I saw it. This one is definitely the front yard of it. Yeah. I should have got it in dress, but I was just...
So, the top-left picture, we don't like, right? Because it's a wood structure. It could fall on somebody, could cause all kinds of problems, and would exceed the height requirements. The bottom picture, which are fenced gardens under four feet in a front yard?
That's a six-foot fence.
That's a six-foot fence?
Yeah, and it's wider than that.
So, it meets the opacity, right? I'm not 20%. Yeah, it's six feet.
It's tricky, because what I also don't want to do is restrict some of those bigger properties where some people even have farms.
Like, to your example, if you own four acres, and your house is almost all the way back, your front yard is your own yard.
Yeah.
I don't disagree with that. Obviously, in a traditional city lot.
So, a typical subdivision, which is most of our city, setback is usually 40 feet. And that's where most of the houses are, so they have to meet that setback. So, these will not be allowed under that code.
Because of the setback.
Yes. If they're required to meet the principal building setback.
So, that would enable the larger lots to be able to meet that setback.
Yes.
I'm agreeing with that, with the way that was presented.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that? Principal building setback?
Can you go more than 40 feet? If you're going to, I think it depends on the depth of the lot and where the building is located, the residence is located. And 40 feet is not a whole lot. You still see it from the road. It's going to be not any different than this. I'm not a fan of the garden, of the front yard fences, so I'm just going to record a second half.
Okay.
I don't disagree. I don't want to prohibit people who have the ability to...
Don't want to prohibit the people who have the ability with the acreage from able to do that. I mean, there's farms on Young Road that have, I mean, that example right there, they have, their whole front yard is their garden slash field of vegetables.
They could also always come to the planning commission for variance.
BZA in that case.
Because we get them all the time.
Yeah.
And we could look at them individually, and when it makes sense, it makes sense.
I'd rather, yeah.
I mean, you've got that big, huge house next to the airport up of North River, where we did the big swimming pool thing. He could put a garden in his front yard, and we wouldn't even see it.
Right.
We'd never even know it was there.
I think you have to have some type of setback, correct? Because a guy will come, like this one, he'll come in for a variance. It's, what, five feet off of 59?
Yeah.
I think you make the variance or the setback big. That's what you do.
Yeah.
I mean, not 40 feet. Make it 60 or 100, and that'll push it off the street. And it won't even apply here, so it won't happen.
How far is he off of the street? Maybe 13 feet, 25?
That one, I think, was 15 to 20 feet.
Okay.
I consider with doing a greater setback than 40, I mean, you know, I can see 50 or 60 feet, but if you do 100, then that would probably prohibit a lot of the smaller lots from having, you know, any...
How much space can they get in today's world in the city gardens?
You can get as many spots as you want.
Yeah.
So, he can do it. He just has to go there.
Yeah.
I mean, and they're cheap.
I did it one year.
Yeah, we did a few.
Yeah. Okay.
So, a setback requirement?
I think 50 or 60 feet would be reasonable.
Yeah, not 40.
Okay. All right. Our next few slides are just for...
One question. So, if they just want to fence their yard in on the front? So, like, I live in Heather Hills, and somebody just put a new, it's probably only four feet tall, but it sits right against the sidewalk, and they just fenced in their backyard. But it's also a side yard. It's on a side street.
So, we're saying, if you're on a corner lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the way it is, it's up to four, you can go up to the property line, four feet in height, as long as it's certain opacity, you can see through it. 20 feet back, right now, you can, four feet, and it can be a privacy fence at 20 feet back from the right-of-way. In this case, since BZA, they get a lot of variances for fences in street side yards. They want to do six-foot privacy fences, and they've commonly required a 10- or 20-foot setback from the side right-of-way, so we would include that in this code just because it's been a common request, and that variance has been granted, if that makes sense. Does that answer your question?
Well, so I just watched my neighbors just do this, right? They had a wooden, they had a wooden stockade fence in the pool in the back area. They took the pool out, they replaced their fence, and they put in a white vinyl fence. And that white vinyl fence is probably not, maybe a foot from the sidewalk. It looks very nice, and it's four feet tall. It's a very nice fence, but it is on the sidewalk. And it comes, you know, they're on a corner lots, it comes out their drive, all the way down the sidewalk, and across the back of their property, the whole backyard is fenced.
Is it privacy?
It is completely solid.
Okay.
But it's only, it may not be, it's probably four feet tall.
Well, give us a call, or there's a chance they do not get permitted.
They're nice people, but I'm just wanting to, it's a big fence, right? And they had a fence coming out of the... But I was, because I even thought about that, like...
That wouldn't be permitted unless they got a variance or something.
And even if it was a replacement of an existing fence that was approved at one time?
Right.
Okay. I can't look them in the eyes when I go by there next time.
Guys, we're only like two slides into this. All right. Our next few slides would be quick, just a continuation and expansion of existing regulations for dumpster screening. Just clarifying that they're required on all four sides. There would be ground and wall-mounted mechanical screening requirements, roof-mounted screening, and loading dock screening. For lighting, we will expand on this. We will still have the same foot candle requirements, you know, at the property line, half-foot candle, parking line, parking area, 10-foot candles. One of the common variances that you guys see is that they exceed that requirement at the property line for whatever it may be. So, there will be administrative adjustment to allow them to exceed that requirement if there's a shared access drive or they are butting a similar type and intensity of use. So, if it's a property being developed that's a retail building that's next to an office building or another retail building, they could do an administrative adjustment to exceed that lighting requirement. We would have bug ratings, which is backlit, uplit, and glare. These ratings are to minimize light pollution, so we require cutoff lighting. You know, we want good lighting. We don't want anything that spills onto adjacent properties if we can avoid it. So, again, just, right now, our lighting standards are very minimum. We don't have much at all. So, it's just expanding on those regulations. Vision clearance, we would finally have some proper vision clearance requirements. The intent is just to make sure you can see around the corners as you're driving. So, for a typical street, for a local street, at least at a corner, you can't have anything within a 20-foot triangle at that corner. That would also apply for driveways. So, at the edge of your driveway in the right-of-way, 10-foot vision clearance triangle. So, when you're pulling out of the driveway, you don't have a giant bush sticking up that you can't see anything, and just a safety hazard. So, we're trying to address that. All right, that's Chapter 6. Any questions?
No.
Good? All right. Chapter 7, Building Design. So, building design requirements now, very minimum, really basic. Just basically says you can't have a blank building facade. There's certain, there's a few different, like, lists of building materials that are preferred and a few different types of prohibitive ones, so that's been one of the major goals for this code update. Comprehensive plan identifies that we need better building design requirements, and we also get that feedback from the public. So, with multifamily, mixed-use, and non-residential developments, except for, this does not apply to industrial. Doesn't make sense to have all these requirements for warehouse buildings. So, again, for non-residential, commercial buildings, multifamily, there would be a tier of materials. So, Tier 1 is based on the quality of materials, the longer, you want longer-lasting materials that are going to hold up over time with little maintenance. So, that's what this is based on. Tier 1 would be brick, manufactured stone, and architectural concrete masonry units. And then, you'd be required to have 25% of the front and street-side building facade to contain that Tier 1 material. So, again, that's just the facade area that's most visible from traffic and pedestrians, so we want that to look, you know, have a high quality. The rest of it can contain whatever tier, tube material you want. You can have a larger amount of Tier 1 material. In this case, we would prohibit vinyl siding and unfinished concrete block. Vinyl siding does not last long at all, requires a lot of maintenance, so just doesn't look, doesn't look good, you know, special in commercial. Window coverage, we would require a certain amount of the building to have glazing or window coverage on the building. So, in the mixed-use overlay for the front elevation, we want, you know, those are buildings that would ideally be closer to the street, so you want that nice facade where it's visible inside it. So, we would require at least 60% to have windows on the front facade, 40% on the street side. And then, the C1, C2, C3 front elevation would have to have at least 40% coverage, and then 20% on the street side. We would also include articulation requirements, so you have to include columns or piers along the facade to break up the, you know, especially if a long building. You'd have to include these piers to break up the visual aspect of the front building elevation. The side and rear elevations, you can include windows, public art, community space, like, outdoor seating back there, vertical landscaping, to achieve that same goal. And then, roof design, again, this would be based on if it's a larger building. You have to include parapet walls or, you know, different heights of the roof articulation. These are just some examples of buildings that would overall meet those requirements. You know, it's nothing crazy that we're requiring here. It's a lot of modern development includes now. A good example of an existing building is right down on Kent Road. Colonnade, I can't remember the building.
Two boars, right?
Yes, thank you. Yeah. So, something like that would meet the requirement. Um, Panda Express, Huntington Bank, which has been approved recently, those would meet that requirement. So it's nothing outlandish that we're requiring developers to adhere to. And then for townhomes, uh, similar setup, uh, this would be more simple, you know, we wouldn't have the required, um, parapet walls and roof articulation, but there'd be the tier-one, tier-two materials. In this case, you have to provide a minimum fifty percent tier-one and fifty percent tier-two. So on the left are just basic, very basic examples of what these could look like for townhomes with these materials. Um, these townhomes would be eight units max per cluster. Um, yeah, and, you know, be set up so they can have courtyards facing each other. Then for duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes, so two, three, and four-unit, uh, multifamily. Um, tier one on the front and street side has to be fifty percent and, uh, fifty percent tier-two. And then the interior side and rear, at least twenty-five percent tier-one and seventy-five percent tier-two. Uh, these are just identified as common building materials used in, in these types of developments um, around Ohio and in the city of Stowe, so it's just remaining consistent with that. Another requirement is that we would want to, um, try to prohibit these style of houses where it's, we call it a snout house, where it's kind of a pig snout. You have the garage sticking out in front of the, in front of the home. It's the, becomes the primary, you know, defining feature of the house. Um, so we want to eliminate that, just require the garage to sit at the building line. I don't have a good example of, um, of what it could look like, but again, just want to prevent that, uh, that snout look. So, any questions on chapter seven?
So the, the bottom picture is, is what you're looking for?
No.
To get rid of the...
Both options.
Yeah. Any questions on this? Okay. Any questions on chapter seven or building design or anything? Okay. Almost done. Chapter eight.
So you're basically eliminating vinyl siding from any, any application other than single-family residential?
Yeah. Yeah, the idea is we, we're limited on the land we have left. We want to make sure that quality builds.
Okay.
So, if there's any, any issues or any concerns with that, please let me know.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, chapter eight is open and community space, tree preservation, and landscape standards. All right, so, uh, one new requirement, uh, which is, this is new to me, uh, social gathering space. So this would be intended for larger projects. Um, the idea is to provide opportunities for placemaking, public art, and a gathering space. So this would be more intended for large plaza areas that are being redeveloped. You know, obviously, there's nothing we can do about the existing ones, but in the case of future development, uh, they have to provide for social gathering space. So, based on the lot size and development size that they're doing, they had to provide some type of improvement, so that could be, last, these are just some of the examples. Um, outdoor kitchen, bike repair station, community garden, fire pits, outdoor seating, yard games. Just any type of space to try to create that gathering space for the community. So these are just, this is one example of how that looks like and what it should look like. You know, promote that outlaw development, but also accommodate that, that area for people to, you know, to gather. Uh, tree preservation, um, so we would require, um, let's see. Yeah, this is, all right, this is a new requirement, so basically, it would require, uh, if a development is removing any trees that are greater than twelve inches in diameter, that they'd have to replace those trees or pay a fee in lieu. Um, the fee-in-lie option would be set up as five hundred and fifty dollars per tree that's twelve inches or greater, at fifty percent of the number of trees. So the way it would work is if you have to remove ten trees from your property that are over twelve inches in size, the developer would have to either replace those trees or pay a fee in lieu to the city for five of those trees, which would cost twenty-seven, two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Yes, and that would be for...
Land bank it? There was no land bank option?
Uh, they're, they're, they could accommodate that through other means. Uh, they could preserve other trees around the site or, um, reinstall them around the site, but as far as land, you mean just preserving it like an area to install them?
Or they would purchase, you know, uh...
Plant trees.
Yeah, plant trees somewhere else, like...
Well, that's what...
To, to do it in other places, in the, I guess, or an option.
Yeah, so the, the way it would work is they pay the city that fee in lieu. It'd go to our parks fund, and then we...
And you would just...
Yes. The five hundred and fifty dollars is how much it costs us to install one tree.
Oh, yeah.
So that's just to make us whole, not trying to make bank on this. Yeah.
So our cost is going to go up, though, right?
No, six hundred dollars.
So why don't we make it a higher cost than it costs us to do it today?
Maybe over time, and I wanted to actually speak with our lot department about that, about me putting a three percent annual increase or something like that, so. Good point, yeah, we are, it's already, I'm, I'm back my head, so we'll, we'll try to address that. Yeah, because I won't come back here every three years and increase it, so...
Oh, yeah, the union, please go up there with that.
All right, uh, landscape standards, so we would just have, um, transition zones, which would just be landscape buffer areas between properties based on the certain uses, so you know, greater distance and, uh, transition zone between a commercial property and a residential property, you know, to create large buffer area, more significant trees, and even fencing if required. Um, this would also kind of serve as our parking setback from properties. So it wouldn't be a designated parking setback based on the zoning district, it would just be based on that transition, transition zone. I also want to mention, these, this chapter has been reviewed by the Urban Forestry Commission, so we did get to incorporate some of their comments. Yeah, again, this is just more about that transition landscape zone and what that looks like. Um, so an example is, let's see, so this is based on uh, budding a residential zone, so a commercial would require a type B, which would be a twenty-foot buffer between the commercial property and residential. They have to provide some type of six-foot screening. So any questions on the, on this code? Okay. Uh, then finally, I think this is the last slide, look. Um, we would include natural landscape area requirements. One of the big issues that we come across every summer is that people want to do these wild yards, and before they can become a wild yard, they are violating our grass ordinance, and we gotta mow it. So it's becoming more and more common, uh, so we took some code from Akron and Talmage who have similar, similar language that we would incorporate. Um, this is in the most recent draft that you have. So basically, you can have no more than fifty, fifty percent of your lot area to be used for this. Has to be certain setback from property lines, buildings, in the right-of-way, and it has to be designated by surrounding fence around it. Um, you would be required to do a permit, submit a landscaping plan, there's maintenance requirements for that, it has to be well-maintained. So we actually have some enforcement mechanisms for this, so... Is... Yes.
Is there any limitation currently to the use of the, um, the parkway in front of your home that's actually city property?
Uh, the Devil's Strip?
Yeah, there's so many different names, but yeah.
Well, different names, the Devil's Strip.
Yeah. And a house in, in Eastwick has planted wildflowers there, and it looks like horrible. Maybe just didn't want to mow, I don't know. But is there any limitation to that, because it's not their property?
Oh. Uh, not that we could include in the zoning code, since it's in the right-of-way. Um, that'd be up to our street department or engineering to enforce. I, I do know there are some cities where they have programs where they can allow that. Like, they'll give you like a little, like, two-by-three piece of land in the Devil's Strip, and you can do like your little wildflower thing, but, uh, we don't have anything like that.
Like a hundred and twenty by four.
We should just go down through the brush hog and just mow it.
Pardon?
We should just go with a big brush hog and just cut it down for them. Some cities do that, right?
Yeah. We can look into that. It's like, where was it? Eastwick? Eastwick?
It's in Eastwick, yeah.
Okay.
Go look in the neighborhood, too.
Wait a minute. I already had one neighbor coming up to me.
It was me.
We'll take a look.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, so that's, that's all I got for chapter eight.
Great.
Any questions so far on? I assume you guys have diligent notes and red lines of all the chapters and...
Absolutely.
All right. Yeah, again, keep reviewing, just reach out if you have any questions.
Make some motion?
You can make some motions for these.
What's that? Can we do them one time?
I would do it separately.
Okay. All right, uh, I move that we approve zoning code changes chapter six.
I second.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Chup, Mrs. Chupdo?
Yes.
Mr. Basic?
Yes.
Mr. DeCuliac?
Yes.
I move that we approve zoning code changes chapter seven.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve zoning code changes chapter seven. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. DeCuliac?
Yes.
Mr. Basic?
Yes.
Mrs. Chupdo?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
All right, uh, I make a motion, we approve zoning code changes chapter eight.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve zoning code changes chapter eight. Any discussion? Are there any comments from the public on that?
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Chupdo?
Yes.
Mr. Basic?
Yes.
Mr. DeCuliac?
Yes.
Right. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, adjourn all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion...